Hey, Taylor County. I'm Alex Runeman with Unleashed Tiger and I'm here with Matt Bagman, who's running for the Taylor County Board of Education. Matt, thanks for coming on the program.
You're welcome. I appreciate you having me.
For sure. Hey, can you just share a little about your background and what ultimately motivated you to run for Board of Education?
Well, I basically grew up my younger years in St. Albans, moved to Bridgeport in 1973, and I graduated from Bridgeport High School. A couple of years after graduation, by pure accident, I was hired at the Bridgeport Fire Department. Had no ambition to be a fireman or EMT or paramedic, but I became all those and made a career out of it. So it was purely by accident. Maybe that's the way it was supposed to be. And from that time, I've served the communities that I've been in. Bridgeport, actually, as a paramedic, we used to cover Bridgeport and about half of Taylor County, and that's back in 1975 to 80. So then West Milford, West Milford Fire Department, Lost Creek, and then I ended up Clarksville Fire Department where I worked until I retired as a professional firefighter EMT in 2005. About four years ago, my wife also retired, and she was kind of bored. We live on a farm at Simpson. We have cattle and a lot of animals. And we, she was kind of bored, and she's always been interested in fostering children. Her mother and sister were in the DHR for the state and dealt with fostering. So she looked into it, and long story short, we became foster parents. And a few weeks in, we ended up, we got a call one morning about siblings. Can you take siblings? And my wife wasn't there. I said, well, how many do you have? And they said, three. Well, three is kind of a bunch. And we, I said, I just hung up from my wife, and she's got her phone in hand. Do you have her number? They said, yes. I said, give her a call. So they called her, and she said, yes, bring them absolutely. So about, I don't know, 9:30, 10 o'clock that night, we ended up receiving three scraggly looking kids from out of the area. And fast forward, we've now had them almost four years. We are their permanent guardians. And going through the foster system, it has opened our eyes to the plight of our kids. Our kids are in trouble. And we, I'll be 70 years old this year. It's not normal for somebody our age to be raising young kids. But if we don't do it, who does? I mean, we love those kids to death. But it's, it really opened our eyes. And then a lot of things going on across the country, maybe not so much in Taylor County, but across the country, that they're trying to indoctrinate children for critical race theory, 1619 project, just all different types of things that I don't like. We have to protect our children. And if we don't do it, who's going to do it? And I'm not here to bash anybody that's on the school board or has been on the school board. But I think we need to get some fresh people in there occasionally and go in a new direction. And we have to do everything we can to raise our children and have them go out into a world that's very competitive, drug ridden, alcohol ridden, a lot of problems in our society. But we need to raise our kids and have families and be happy in life.
That makes sense. So what do you see then? You talk about board membership, and that's what we're talking about in this race. What do you see as the primary responsibilities of a board member?
Well, a board member has a fiduciary responsibility. It's our responsibility to, as a board member, to serve the people that they represent. And it's not necessarily about what I think is on a political realm, you know, Democrat versus Republican. This is bipartisan position, and we need to make decisions that will best serve the children, number one. They're what we're here for. Serve them and the teachers and all the support personnel. So number one, on my agenda is safety. If we have to make these schools as safe as possible, that is number one. There's other things that, you know, that I believe in and am interested in vocational training. We need to teach our kids a trade if they're not heading to college. Teach them a trade. I know a young man that is a welder, and two years ago, as a welder in Harrison County made gross $185,000. That's some serious money. And if you're not going to college and you're not college material, we have to send these kids out from the education system so that they can make a living and make a good living, not just a minimum wage job.
Yeah. So how, you know, I guess the follow up question is, how you would measure success as a board member? Maybe that's one of the metrics. But how would you, you know, if you're able to be elected and you look back, you know, how would you like it to be measured in terms of success and what you think would be a successful term as a board member?
Well, again, I think paramount is, did we make our kids safe? Do we have safe facilities? Do we have good results? Some of the test scores and some of this information, as a somebody running for office, we don't have the information that people have on the inside. So we're on the outside looking in. But we need to, success would be to bring scores up with our, with our kids, basic reading, writing, arithmetic, and not just hand a child a paper and say, you've graduated. Good luck. We need to have, if we have kids, children, students coming out of our school system that have a direction in life, whether it be college, whether it be military, whether they learn skill, and they're successful in it, and we've kept them safe, those items to me would be, would be a measure of success.
Yeah, perfect. Now, so let's, let's driving in just a little bit more around specifics then. What specific actions or initiatives might you want to prioritize if you're fortunate enough to be elected into the Taylor County Board this cycle?
Well, again, and I keep going back to it, is safety. Are our schools safe? And I have a lot of people that tell me they're not. They've done a lot. And again, I'm on the outside looking in. I'd really be interested in going through the schools and our facilities and looking at them, because my, my background, even in college, is safety. I served out in oil and gas as a safety consultant. So that's one of the very most important things to me. If our buildings are safe, you know, we don't want to become a Sandy Hook or some other community that goes through the tragedies of an active shooter or something of that nature. So if we can harden our schools, and I'm in favor of having police officers at every school. I know that sometimes you hear, well, the money's not there to do it. We can't do it for this reason or that reason. What other priority is there than to keep these kids and their teachers and support personnel safe? That's, that's number one. Getting a lot of kids really pushing vocational training and making it a success that way. You know, kids come out of vocational trading, a lot of vocational training is free. So they're not coming out of four years of college with or without a degree and having a big debt. And they can go out in the world as a carpenter, maybe enter the carpenters' union or mining. There's, there's so many vocations that I think are kind of slipping through the cracks that we can help direct these young people to that'll make them a success. So, you know, there's, that's a couple items. Our challenged students, our challenged children, we need to do everything humanly possible to help elevate these children to their highest potential, whatever it is. Out campaigning, I've been told by some parents that, that people on the school board don't want to listen to them. If you have a challenged child, autistic or whatever other challenge they have, who knows best how to teach that child than a parent? So I would be interested in having a committee of three, four, five people that can, can give information and help. My area of expertise is not in, in children of that, of that nature who are challenged. So to have people that can inform us and help us bring these children to their highest potential is another high priority in my estimation.
Yeah, okay. So we've, we've talked about, you know, what your measures of success would be on the board. We've talked about some specific initiatives. Let's go on the macro for a minute and just say, what is your vision for the future of education in this county?
Well, my vision is that we become an exemplary county. People say, well, Taylor County's small. Well, they don't have the money that bigger counties do. I don't think it's always about the money. It's about the people. We do need to, as far when it comes to teachers and support personnel, we need to pay these folks a good competitive wage so that they don't go to a Harrison or a Mon County just because of wages. A lot of it's attitude. The fact that we have a smaller amount of students, I think it, in some respects, it should be easier to elevate our students to a more exemplary and successful plateau. So it's, it's not always the money, it's the people. And we need to recruit and be able to retain good, responsible teachers. They're, they're out there. I mean, some of the teachers we deal with, they, and I must say, everybody that we dealt with, with the school system has been very responsive and, and, you know, return phone calls and things of that nature. But I think we can do a better job. The status quo is, is not something that I strive for. I think we can be better than that. I think we can, we can elevate our students in that, in that respect.
Yeah, yeah, I love that. And so the, so that's, that's the vision. And what would be some of those tangible outcomes? We're going to get ready to get, to go to challenges and opportunities in a minute. But what would be some of the tangible outcomes that would come from your vision of being an exemplary educational county in that way?
Well, if other counties and other people look at Taylor County and they say, look, they're really doing things right. They've got kids coming out, going to college that are going to be professionals. Everybody can't be, but there's a lot of people that fall through the cracks. And, and I think a lot of this goes back, when I think back in school, I think of kids that, if they were called on in class, they would turn red and they wouldn't have an answer for whatever question or whatever problem we were talking about. And I think that a lot of those kids, we didn't know it then, but I think a lot of those kids were challenged in one way or another. And we need to do, I think we need to do a better job. And I'm not going to sit here and bash, you know, what's happened in the past. But I just think sometimes new blood, getting new people in and retaining good people. It's, it's not one, one area or another area. It's the whole school board system. It's, it's making successful young adults coming out of our, our schools. If we look at Taylor County and say, man, those people are really doing it right. They got so many people going to college, becoming professionals. They've got people that, that don't come out of school with a piece of paper in their hand that they can wad up and throw in the garbage. They're going out, they're becoming welders, they're becoming mechanics. Some of them might be farmers. Many of them may go into the military. There, we just need to do a better job, I believe, in directing the young people. They're not cattle. You don't herd them through and let them go on the other side without direction. They, when they come through the system, if they have direction and success, then I think we're all successful.
It makes sense. So let's talk about, yeah, we could, we could probably go on quite a bit today, talking about all the challenges we're up against the county and the opportunities we have, quite frankly. But what I'd like to hear from you is, what do you feel is the most pressing issue currently facing our county today from an educational perspective? And how might you address it?
Well, I think the most pressing, and this bore out in a meeting I was at the other day, we have, and I believe I'm quoting this correctly, it was quoted that 42% of the children in Taylor County are being raised by someone other than the parent. That's, that floors me. That's astonishing. And the answer to it, what's the reason? The answer was drugs. It's drugs. We have the last couple, parents are on drugs, grandparents are on drugs. The last, the last several years, drugs have become such a scourge on our area and society as a whole, that our children are the ones that's, that's suffering. So I don't know all the answers. I'm not an expert in, in the drug situation and a lot of other situations. But drugs are the biggest downfall. And if we can do something there, I mean, you have to do it household at a time, in my opinion. We fix that problem. We need to get parents involved in their kids. You know, there's just a whole array. I really can't put my finger on one issue. It's several issues that, that we have to do better in. And if we do better, you start seeing a little progress, and it's like a snowball going downhill. If you get it going in the right direction, it'll get bigger and bigger and bigger. So, you know, those are, those are some of the things. And again, when you're outside looking in, you don't know all the problems. I don't know exactly how safe our schools are. But I'm sure there's areas that we can improve in. So it's not just one thing. It's, it's the whole system. A problem in this county is the bus drivers. We don't have enough bus drivers. I remember last year, one day they called off school. They said they didn't have enough bus drivers. This year, they called off school one day. They said they didn't have enough teachers. You know, these are problems that I believe we can fix, but it's going to take some effort, thinking outside the box, paying people well, retaining people, getting the best people possible. We can do better. We can always do better. And again, I'm not here to bash people that are on the board. I know many of them, they're good people. Same way with people that, that worked the board in the past. I'm not here to bash them. But I, we just need to do better for the sake of our kids, you know, to sit here and say, well, I want to do better for the kids. Well, how do you want to do it? There's so many ways we can do it. The vocational training, I think, and I don't know this, I don't know how many after school programs, programs for feeding our kids. I know, I'm pretty sure that they get free meals at school. You know, there's kids out here in, in our community. If it weren't for the school system, they wouldn't have a meal during the day or a good meal. So there, again, that's just, that's just kind of a little side issue, but it's an important issue. And we need to look at all this. We need to top to bottom, kind of a day awakening and look at the things we're doing right and look at the things we're doing wrong and maybe go to some other school districts where, where they have a good reputation of doing things right and see what they're doing. You go to a meeting and you meet with five people and there's, of course, public there. Sometimes the right ideas aren't in that meeting. You need to expand, go out, talk to people that have the reputation of doing it right. Let's see what they're doing. And let's see if we can make improvements.
Yep, makes sense. What about, what on the other side? So if we talk about the challenges, what opportunities do we have in order, you know, that you may see in our schools or things we can take advantage of here in the county?
Well, one of the things that, that I think is really important for the kids, extracurricular activities, sports, you know, you help develop through good sports systems. You help develop young adults. At least that should be what the coaches are, are out to do. Yeah, their one-loss record is important, but hopefully our coaches, and I think they are, because I see a lot of their postings and stuff. But we need to, through our sports and extracurricular activity, help develop the, the skills and, and the, some of the things that, that are needed to go out and succeed. Sporting is one. Our facilities, I know in the last school board meeting, they, they are spending somewhere in the neighborhood, I can't quote a direct figure, but it's going to be somewhere in a neighborhood of $400,000 to upgrade the baseball field at Grafton High School. And the, the information that we received was it hasn't been done for about 40 years. So, you know, we need to look at our facilities and we need to update. We need a, a short term plan how to upgrade. And we also need a long term plan of how to bring our facilities up. One thing that's important to me is, is the schools. I think Flemington needs a new school. And, and they tell me, well, you don't have the students. Well, I'm, my belief is, number one, that they put the, I believe it's the fifth and sixth grade over in the middle school. And I think if you bring them back to the grade school and build a new school for Flemington area and maybe redraw the lines as to the kids going to whatever school, balance it out. One of the things in meetings I see is people talk about economic development. Well, if you have a company coming into your area or wants to come into your area, the two things that they look at predominantly is the school system. If I'm going to bring 50 families into Taylor County area with, with school age children, where are we going to put them? I don't think we have the room right now to place them. The other thing is housing. So again, they talk about economic development. Without a good school system, with a good reputation, and without adequate housing, you know, you say, what's that got to do with, with the school system? Well, I think it has a lot to do with the school system. If you don't have adequate, good housing for people, people are not going to move in. And if you don't have people moving in, then you're, you're, you have a very small chance of getting economic development and new companies coming into your area. So there's just a whole array of things. And, you know, we can go any direction with it. But I think it's just not one little item that, that you can put out there and say, this will fix everything. It won't. There's, you know, we all need to, to look and, and do better, keeping the school system, keeping our children in mind. They're our future. What kind of future are we going to have? We need to do better. And
Speaking about
out there. I think the will is there. We, we just need a little bit of a push, I believe.
Yep, that makes sense. So the will's out there, the people are there. And that leads me to the next question is, how do you, how do you plan, if you're elected board member, to make sure you're engaging with parents and teachers and, and students to make sure their voices are heard and incorporated into your decision making as a board member?
Well, we need to get into the schools, I believe. We need to talk to parents. We, I don't, I'm not sure if they have it. I think they do. Career Day. We need to get professionals. I used to do Career Day as a firefighter, did it at South Harrison High School and a couple other schools. And in South Harrison, one of, years ago, I remember going into class and there was six or eight or 10 kids in there. And, and the first question I asked was, how many of you are interested in the emergency medical system or firemen, policemen, that kind of thing? And you might have one that raised their hand. And I said, so the rest of you are here because you have to be somewhere. And they looked and they, yeah. So after I gave a little talk to them on the importance of it and how they can help their fellow citizens, after it was all over, which I think was about a 30 minute talk, I said, now, now, how many of you think you might be interested in that? And usually, maybe half of them would raise their hand. So we need to, we need to bring professionals in. We need to let the kids know what their, what the possibilities are. There's, I think there's just an array of things. We need to engage with the parents. Like I mentioned, one, one parent said, they won't talk to me and I have an autistic child. We need to do better. What, how do we teach that child? What can we do to make it better? Again, I just think there's so many things. We need to engage with people. And I don't have all the answers. Probably have more questions than I do answers. But sometimes we gotta, we gotta ask the questions, get the right people in place that, that can answer these for us. And sitting on the board, I noticed they ask a lot of questions to people that came up in front of the board. And that's what you have to do. Nobody has all the answers. You have to get people around you that can supply the answers and be accurate. And also people that, again, maybe talking to, to other areas, other people, where, what direction do we go in to make it successful? And I just think that everybody needs to do better. We, we kind of get in a humdrum of going along to get along. You know, it's, it's easier to go to, and I'll just say, go to school or go to a job and, and get through the day. But we need to re-energize ourselves and, and look at, look at the, what's happened to our children in the last, you know, couple decades. I mean, to me, it's, it's a downward slide. It's a dangerous downward slide. So what can we do? Let's re-energize ourself. Let's, let's do it with a little vigor, more vigor, instead of just humdrum through the day, getting through the day. We just need, my wife and I, with, with our foster kids, we've dedicated our lives to helping the children. I mean, we've, you know, we've, we have children, we have grandchildren, they do well. And we're lucky, we're lucky with that. We, I don't know of any grandchild we ever had that experienced with drugs. And we're so blessed by that. And, you know, the rest of our lives, we are, we're dedicated to, to do something to help, help the kids. If we don't do it, if we do not do it, who's going to do it?
Yep. Yep. That's, it's a good point. So Matt, we have, we have really only two more questions. And we're kind of on the slide, the backside here. And really, one is just, is kind of a lighthearted one. So can you share a favorite memory or a moment that reflects what you love about this community?
I've, I've not been in Taylor County too long. 2012, I think we built our house. But my wife's family has been here for 200 years. And getting out, talking to some of the people that I've talked to, there are good people in Taylor County. Sometimes people don't step forward to, to help in a situation or belong to an organization. They're, they're just not people that will raise their hand and, and volunteer. But if you go talk to them and, and tell them what your mission is and ask them to help, a lot of times they will step forward. So talking to people, I've, it's amazing. Some of the people I've talked to and their ideas, a lot of them are very parallel to my own. They're out there. And if we get out and show a little energy, I believe more people will support the schools, which they do, I think they do a pretty dang on good job of. But support the communities, become involved in communities. We just need to energize our community.
Excellent. Well, Matt, is this customer on this program? We give the last word to the candidate. So what message would you want to leave with the voters before we conclude the interview today?
Well, I hope people see, see my interview. I put out signs. I have rat cards. I've talked to a lot of people. talked to a lot of people. Um, most people are on board with, with my message. And again, I've, I've met some people, you know, you think, well, I'm going to stop for five minutes and a half hour later, you're still talking about one subject or another. And I find out that most of us are more alike than we are different. And, and I'm talking about Republican versus Democrat. When I talk to people, I don't ask them what political party they're affiliated with. And most generally, they don't tell me. But their ideas about how to take care of the children and what we need to do as a society, they're, they're pretty close. So, uh, again, it's, it's the energy level. We need to kick up the energy level and, and get the job done, I believe.
Awesome. All right. Matt Wagaman for Taylor County Board of Education. Matt, thanks coming on the, for, thanks for coming on the program and good luck in the election.
Thank you. I appreciate it.